Agents to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep.
First, Lavage, please take attendance.
Trustee Polley.
Here.
Trustee Lappin.
Here.
Clerk Palavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Crawl.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Thanks. Excuse.
Supervisor Kajabowski.
Here. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have anything to add or remove or change?
I do. I'd like to add the official bond renewal.
Yes, item number eight under new business.
Sure.
I'll make the motion.
Sure.
Or ask, first ask if there's any discussion.
Is there any other discussion?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, then we'll take a voice vote.
All in.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was the same? Thank you.
No.
It's now the time for public comment. If you're in a. There's anybody online?
See where it says more in those three little dots. If they hit that.
Okay.
Where Haley's just highlighted.
So if you hit the. What the old one says.
Yes.
Okay. Then raise your hand if you have a comment.
Or if anybody.
Or seeing none online, if anybody in the audience has commented. Come to the podium and say your name. Saying none. Moving on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything that they want to pull or discuss from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll support it.
I need to say. Ask if yours.
You don't have to. So the motion is to pay the bills, receive and file the minutes. The tax department reports and the correspondence.
So then a roll call.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Kajabowski.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to take a second. Two things. First, I just want to address the fact that I have, in fact, resigned my position from the fire department as required. I have a letter here. I'll just read it to you guys briefly. Your charter township of Alpena, it is with a mixture of a heavy heart and hope for the future that I submit my resignation from my position with the Alpena Township Fire Department effective immediately. Also, this was given before this one. Due to legal and procedural requirements, this step has become necessary. I want to express my profound gratitude for the opportunity to serve as a paid-on-call responder for this department for the last sixteen and a half years. The experience I have gained here, the relationships I have built, and the shared vision we have worked toward will always hold a special place in my heart. I deeply believe in the mission and potential of this organization, and it has been my privilege to contribute to its growth and success. Although circumstances require my resignation at this time, I remain steadfastly committed to my community, to the fire department and its future. I am hopeful that in time, the board may see fit to reinstate me as a. To reinstate me to continue serving my community as a first responder. Until that day, please know that I will remain a strong and fair advocate for the fire department, and as a leader, I will remain committed to the safety and well-being of this community, supporting it in any way that I can. So. That's it. I also just wanted to take a quick second. Just to address the board. I just want to take a quick second to apologize if my actions or words have caused any misunderstanding or discomfort. While my intentions were never to offend or hurt, I recognize that the impact may not have aligned with my intent. And please know that I do value my seat at this table, and I am committed to ensuring better communication moving forward. Thank you. Moving forward. F and B operations.
You two, if you want to. I can start. As everyone knows. Our billing clerk, well, maybe you don't know, but our billing clerk, Kelly Koala, it will be retiring January third. And we have the opportunity to hire a billing clerk that is an employee of F and B. Operations. This person would work for F and B operations. They come with years of experience with not only F and B operations, but also with our BSNA software that we use. To me, this is like a wonderful opportunity for us that. To be able to get someone with this knowledge. The clerk did run some numbers and the amount would be around, what was it, like eighty thousand?
It's about five thousand more.
Five thousand more than it would cost us if she were a township employee. But with that. F and B, if she was an F and B employee, they would also cover her trainings. If the employee needed to be off for a day, a week, anything like that, F and B would provide us with someone to take that person's place. And since. We've been working with our auditors over the years, it's been a problem, but the auditors to have the same person, same people currently, Rhonda and Kelly. Do the billing. And they also collect the money. And that's not a separation of duties that we're supposed to have. Because we haven't had staff to do this. So this. Is a great opportunity for us to get her and. If this happens, the employee would not be upfront, collecting any kind of money at all. It would be a separate and a separate place in the township building. So. I'm recommending that we go ahead and. Kind of add this to the contract with F and B.
Make the addendum.
Add it right. Do you have anything to add?
I agree with you. I think this is an opportunity. I did check with the labor attorneys and we do have to give the union five days' notice before this new person starts that we'd be doing this. And they have the opportunity to bring. Exactly what did they? The opportunity to bargain about alternatives and the effect on the employees involved. Well, there's no effect on the employee involved because she's retiring. So. But we do have to give them five days' notice, which I could give out tomorrow, even though that person's not starting until January.
The other thing too is this person works out of the Ascota F and B office, and they want to move to Alpena. So that's a plus for us as well, that they want to move here and they'd be living in Alpena.
So I'll make that motion.
Steve.
Oh, well, we're going to make a motion that we can go into discussion.
I would make a motion that we accept the F and V's addendum with the number three as presented.
And I'll support that.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes. A couple of questions. One, why does it? Why would it be connected to the current contract? And wouldn't it be better to have an independent contract? So that we're not bound by some of the other terms and conditions of the original F and V contract relative to automatic increases with inflation. I unless this person is going to be paid. And would be subject to whatever. Employment raises that. She may get through F and V. I just wondered if we should shouldn't separate this because I'm getting a little concerned that we've got too many eggs in one basket. Is there any consideration? Have you talked to him about making separate terms and conditions?
So you want a separate contract?
Well, there's, there'd be an automatic increase. In the current contract, there's a, there's an inflationary factor that's built in. So that this payroll would be adjusted at the same percentage as would any other portion of the F and V contract.
I believe the addendum could make it clear that 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 wouldn't be the case for this particular worker. But we'd have to take care to make sure that that states that that's the case.
I would like to at least explore that because that could save the township money by without having the escalation clause triggered. And then I guess the other question is how did we try to seek outside?
Steve, would you go for that? I mean, if I was up for B, this employee is going to get raises their cost for their insurance and everything is going to go up every year. If I'm understanding you correctly, you want a. Stable rate that doesn't go up every year.
No, I realize that, I realize that a person is, you know, that things are going to happen. I would just like to have a separate. I wish I had the whole contract in front of me because there's a, there's a section of that contract which F and V's fees would escalate. Based upon the CPI. And so, so if the, if the CPI is four percent. Then this contract goes up four percent. And, and if, and if the employee would otherwise be entitled to a two percent raise. Then, then we're just. Funding other parts of the F and V contract. So I'm just, I just, I would, I personally would like to see it tighten down a bit. And maybe, maybe Tim can.
The motion could be to approve it, subject to. Township attorney review.
I would be more, I would be more inclined to look at something like that than to just arbitrarily just know that if the, if the CPI was up by five percent, then the whole contract goes up by five percent where we could perhaps limit this contract to a, a certain percentage step of two percent, whoever it might be. That makes sense?
Yeah, we're just going to be a flat rate and any increases will have to be approved by the board in the future.
Yeah.
I have a question. Who's paying for this employee? Is F and V paying for it? Is the township paying for it?
F and V.
Then why do we need to worry about what she gets?
Yeah, I don't feel like that's.
Well, we don't know what she's getting. That's not my point.
Okay.
My, my point is that whatever they pay here, they pay here. But there's a clause in the, in the, in the overall F and B contract, which can adjust the contract by certain, I think the last percentage was like four percent or something like that. Whatever the, whatever, whatever the regional CPI was. For the cost of living.
Three point four was last year's.
Okay, so it went up by about that much. So. I'm just throwing it out there. Just trying to, try to put some sort of. Walls on, walls on this particular section of the contract.
So exactly, how would you like me to amend my motion?
As, as our attorney said, to make a motion subject to the full review of our counsel. And modifications as, as, as he sees fit, as he sees fit and as board sees fit. Did we try? And my other question is, did we try to seek outside people?
There aren't any, I mean.
Experienced.
No, this is a inexperienced person that works with our system with, not our system yet, but they work with under F and V. They know how all the billing works. I mean, they're experienced down in Ascota, which. And this is a professional person that knows how to answer those intricate questions. We've never had anyone that really knows the ins and outs of utility billing. And I think this is our opportunity to get that person.
We are not using the system.
To its fullest.
We're probably using ten percent of the utility billing system.
I mean. This is a huge opportunity for us.
Anyway, my thoughts.
I had similar thoughts, Systees. I. Would love to see that be a township position. For the township and not through F and V, if that was possible. I understand what you're saying, that it's a very intricate position and that this person they're recommending has the experience with our software and everything, and I think that was valid and important. Is there a, like a term limit on the contract? Is it open ended? Is that? She'll remain employed for however long and the contract will be revisited?
I know that we, if we do not like her, we can.
Right, get somebody else.
Get somebody else.
Right.
We don't have any of the H and R burden, HR burden.
None.
Right.
And obviously, she would not be an employee of ours. So we don't have union issues that we have to deal with.
Right.
Are you good with that amendment, Michelle?
So. What I have is. To approve amendment number three as presented, subject to full review by our attorney.
And, and modifications as necessary.
Yes, I am. I'm good with that from the amendment.
There you.
I am as well.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Supervisor Kajabowski. Nope.
No.
Public funded health and.
Business, the public funded health insurance.
Oh, that's me. That's it. That's an annual task that we do. Under the publicly funded health insurance contribution act. And it's a requirement in the statute. For you to adopt a motion to continue so that you can continue providing the health benefits at the same level that you do provide for the township employees. And so every year I shove a motion this way.
Oh. All right. I'd like to make a motion. And it says. I moved that the township exempt itself from the requirements of the publicity. A publicly funded health insurance contribution act for the upcoming medical benefits plan coverage year.
Thank you.
I'll support that. More showing in support?
Yes.
Any discussion?
That's a roll call.
Let's do a roll call.
No. This is different. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Kajabowski.
Yes.
Yeah, if you want to announce what we're doing, that it's number. Request for proposal.
Okay, the request for the proposal, it's from me. If you want to come up and speak.
Yeah. We did approve putting out an RFP for our health benefits. And Quentin currently has them and provided a proposal. We also got a proposal from Franklin Benefits, but it did not encompass everything we requested. It's missing. Vision, dental, life.
So with that, I know I've met most of you. Abby and I just met.
So my God.
Is it? Yep, okay. So I've met most of you. Abby and I just met, but Quentin Meek, I work with Assured Partners here in Alpena. I handle our employee benefit business up here in this kind of northeast Michigan sector. So I also work with some clients downstate as well. So essentially, I have clients all over the state of Michigan. We obviously, we've gashed decades. We've, we've worked with the township on both property casualty insurance and what we'll discuss today, employee benefits. So it's a little unique in how I'll probably present this. I'm going to keep it really, really high level. And just kind of give you a little bit of, of data, if you will, or some commentary around what the renewal looks like. Why I've made the recommendations I've made if we are to continue servicing the Charter Township of Alpena. And then I want to make sure I, you know, open it for questions for all of you. Just so you know, our process, you know, it's been, it's been a good three or four years, I think, since we went over this. You know, Michelle and myself, and then I have a team too. So I have an analyst that goes out and quotes. Every year we get you guys a couple of quotes. We try not to disrupt if we don't have to, but every year we get you a couple of quotes. Really up here, you're looking at Blue Cross Blue Shield, Blue Care Network, or Priority Health. That's what we have for network up here. You know, we, we got some other quotes. They're forty percent higher and your employees wouldn't have access to a good network. So it's not so much that we don't want to go out to other carriers. It just isn't going to do any good for the townships and employees or the township itself. But I have an analyst that does all of that for me, and then I have a full service team behind me. So sometimes it's Michelle and I talking, or it's an employee reaching out, and then I'm, I'm referring them over to a service team. That's by design. We want them to get the best services as quickly as possible. And so. What I really want to focus on today, since you guys know us pretty well, you guys have a lot of other stuff to discuss on your agenda. Is just what I recommend we do here, should we continue as is. And, and part of this is too, guys, just so you understand pricing and the way that it works, I think most of you might be aware of this, but. All brokers, people like me or anybody else who respond to the RFP. We all have access to the same pricing. It's a little bit different than like when you shop your home and auto. When you shop your home and auto, different brokers have access to different carriers. We call them markets. Here, in this case, we all have access to the same markets and they price it the same for every agent. We're all paid the same too. So it's a little unique. You know, whether you went with us or someone else, they're going to come to you with the same pricing. So it does make things a little unique. Really, what you're picking a broker for in employee benefits is service. And so. So that you know how service works for us, Michelle and I meet throughout the year. So we meet at a six-month point where we go, we call it pre-renewal meeting. We start talking about these numbers then. We don't have the numbers that far out in advance, but we start talking strategy. Hey, here's what I'm seeing in the market. This is what an increase might look like. Do you think we might want to make a change this year? What, you know, what do you think? How is that going to work out? We also do, you know, post-open enrollment meetings to make sure everything's going okay, that open enrollment went okay. Take any concerns, that type of thing. And we help with, you know, all compliance needs. We have, we actually have a compliance director on staff. So we're not going to a third-party attorney to help out with compliance questions. They sit on staff. So from a service perspective, this is not a once-a-year conversation between Michelle and I. We're in pretty consistent contact. This year's renewal, the medical renewals coming in at around fifteen percent. I put fifteen percent on there as I was going through numbers before I came here tonight. I actually realized that one of our numbers. Was, was inflated. So it's actually a thirteen and a half percent increase, not a ton different than, than the fifteen percent. But. I wanted to share that with you all. What I recommend is that we renew as is, meaning we don't change the medical. We gave you options, I think, that went all the way down to nearly flat compared to last year. You're limited, you're a small group, meaning you're under fifty employees. You're limited in what you can do to get better pricing. You can do about four things. You can change the network style, so you can take it from a PPO or an HMO to a point of service, which just narrows the network for your employees. You could raise the deductible. You could change coinsurance. Basically, put more burden on the employee, for lack of a better word. You could do that and that'll lower your costs. After discussion with Michelle and kind of getting a check on where budget's at. I think that moving forward and not modifying the medical makes the most sense, and here's why. I think you're going to see fifteen percent increase next year too. I'm not in the business of saying things that are going to make you happy. I'm your consultant. I'm going to tell you what I see in the market. The Blues Priority, they've pretty much told us that's what's going to happen. So I might as well tell you now so that you're aware of it. The reason I don't think you should change the medical is, I think we should leave it as is for this year. Confirm what pricing looks like next year. And if you have to make changes then, due to budget constraints or whatnot, we do it then. You don't want to change something for your employees right now. Let's say raise a deductible. And then next year, not have the ability to do that if you need to do it. Does that track? Do you understand what I'm saying? I don't want you guys to get backed into a corner because we know it's going up one way or the other. So if you, if you were to raise deductibles to increase or decrease that renewal percentage this year. You're still going to have an increase next year. But now you're going to, you know, you're not going to be able to raise the deductible again. You'd be making it unaffordable for your employees. So that's why I'm recommending an increase like that, because it's what the market's doing. It's, and it's not a Charter Township of Alpena problem. Like it's, it's a, it's a market issue. If you're a small group, you're seeing a blanket fifteen to twenty percent increase. You've seen an increase in claim activity coming out of COVID. People are going back to the doctor. They're discovering things that, you know, weren't discovered for a couple of years. So when they're going back to the doctor, that partial blockage is now nearly a full blockage. It's a more expensive surgery. Or tumors maybe have, have grown over time because people weren't going to the doctor. And so what we're seeing is not only did healthcare costs increase. The, the type of service being sought is for more extensive things than if it was caught early. So it's kind of the perfect storm. And we're seeing those rates obviously being passed on to people like your employees and townships like yourself. I don't know how long this will last. We just know for sure that based on write-ups issued by the Blues and Priorities, it's for sure going to last another year. So that's why we're kind of in this wait-and-see mode. So we renew the medical as is. You essentially have rate locks on all your other lines of coverage. Your medical is obviously funded by the township, which is a great benefit to your employees. Everything else is voluntary and you have rate locks until 2026. So unless, you know, Michelle and the board feels like we want to make a change, of which in most cases it's less. I think all except for the short-term disability, it's a forty-two percent increase. The only reason we would do that would be if we wanted to move all the voluntary lines to Guardian. What I, what I would recommend today is that you approve, and this is, I say this because I have other boards do it this way. You approve Michelle to make the decisions on this slide. And allow her and I to have a discussion to implement one of these two. And the reason I say that is, you know. It gives her a little bit of leeway. And in, in a normal world where we're not, you know, filtering it through the board, we would be having these conversations like, hey, here's the final pricing, Michelle. Here's what it looks like both ways. What do we want to do? We would, do we want to just stick the rate lock out for another year? Or do we want to move things over to Guardian because we play with numbers a little bit? And so I think, you know, long story short, none of these change coverage. It's not going to impact coverage for your employees. It's just really a matter of, do we want to make a change this year to Guardian? Or do we not? And maybe wait till next year and see where pricing comes back. It, it, it's, it's kind of that simple, for lack of a better term. Your voluntary lines, your dental, vision, life, short-term and long-term disability. That's not where you're getting the pricing hits. You know, you're going to see plus minus ten percent on all of those. If one of them took a heavy increase next year, we could plug and play with a different carrier to keep that down. Those lines aren't breaking the bank. And obviously, those are voluntary, so they're, you're, you know, on your employee anyway. So from a, from a township perspective, you wouldn't be funding it, but your employees are. We want to keep it flat for your employees. That's not going to be an issue. That's just a softer market, if you will, for those lines. So all in all. I recommend we kind of more or less move forward business as usual. Not make a change to the plans this year, reevaluate next year and go from there. Questions you guys have?
Is the deductible going to be the same?
Deductible's going up by fifty dollars on the single and a hundred bucks on family. And that's, we call that a mapped design change, which means the Blues have mandated that change. It's not a change we made. So it doesn't have an impact on pricing downward. Yeah. Minor change, it's happening across all of those plans. I don't know that I've had a group that didn't have a deductible change.
Did the coinsurance change too?
Coinsurance did not change. Yep. The rest of the structure of the plan, coinsurance, copays on, on prescriptions, stuff like that, no change.
I'll make a motion that we. Contract with Assured Partners and authorize the clerk to make any recommended plan, planned selections, I'm sorry, for as of one, one of twenty-five.
I'm good with us just deciding right now to keep all of them where they are. Because we have the price lock.
Okay.
Yeah.
So on the. Short-term disability and all that.
That's fine with me.
Yeah.
So then I'll make a motion, we contract with Assured Partners. With the recommended plan selections as of one, one of twenty-five.
Which will stay remains with the carriers we're currently with.
Yep.
Okay.
With the current carriers that we currently have.
I got it.
Oh, I thought you wanted me to say it all.
Is there support?
I'll support it. I'll support it.
Roll call. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, any other discussion?
I guess the only other discussion I would have is I've spent a fair amount of time looking at it. It really wasn't where I practiced. And so I had to really dig down deep into it. And I, first thing I found was that the other provider, uh, didn't meet its specs.
No, didn't. Left out a lot of it.
It, as, as, as Quentin had said, the Blues are the Blues. And everything else was just something that is a, uh, benefit to the, uh, employees of the township. So I, I appreciate, uh, getting an opportunity to sort of dig down deeper, but I too would agree that Assured Partners, uh, met the bits specs.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski. If I, if I'm saying it right. Okay, because if I'm not, let me know.
That's okay. Um, we had to.
Thank you guys.
I could take that one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Quinn.
I can't see anything. Did I get it? Okay, you got?
Okay, um, everybody has budget adjustments that I prepared. We do have a couple to add. Um, we need to add in the general fund to one oh one, one oh one, eight oh one professional and contractual services, five thousand dollars. And we would take that out of one oh one, one oh one, eight oh three dot zero 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 legal. And then the public safety, um, we discovered today, we were told that there's some problems with garage doors that need to be fixed. So we need to transfer twelve thousand out of the public safety savings and put it into building maintenance.
One thousand?
Well, they're going to need two garage doors and one door won't even open right now. We have to get that fixed first.
Two plus was on there.
Which one did we just?
We did over here on north.
Oh.
So this is on south.
Oh, okay.
But there's one or, is there any here that need to be done too?
Two doors on the north. But this right here needs to be replaced and the door opener in the south side.
So that is my recommendation for budget adjustments.
Any discussion? Support.
Who made, did I make?
You made them.
Okay.
Good. Any other discussion?
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski.
Yes.
Number four.
Yes. So number four, new business of the interfire chief termination of contract.
Um, chief plus has turned in its termination of its contract. We just need to make a motion to accept it.
I'll make that motion.
And I will support it with a great big thank you.
Any other discussion?
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
With regret, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
With regret, yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski.
Yes. We also have the retirement paperwork or, um, yeah, paper here for Kelly.
Um, Kelly Yava, the billing clerk who's been here thirty-three years, has finally decided she wants to retire and leave us. So January third will be her last day. So I will make a motion that we accept Kelly's resonate resignation for retirement.
Support. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Oh, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski.
Yes. Okay. The NEMCO contract for the master planning and zoning.
Do you want me to try to take this one?
You do. Yes, I do.
Abby and I are both, we don't really know a lot about this, other than.
But then we needed.
We need to approve this contract so that they release the fifty thousand dollar grant that Nathan applied for. So once we approve this contract, sign it and get it back to NEMCO, the fifty thousand dollar grant that Nathan wrote and got will pay for this project.
That's how I understood.
Yes, so.
I'll make a motion to, uh, contract with, um, the, uh, NEMCO for the master planning and zoning of the charter township of Alpena.
I will support that.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes. I do it twice.
I, I have to because Russ is.
Oh, it's, okay.
No, I went first last night. Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Supervisor Kozibowski.
Yeah. The next step is the budget meeting dates. Um, I just wanted to throw a couple of dates out there. I was looking at December.
December or January?
January.
I'm not doing many. There's no time in December.
Oh, wait, no, actually, I did think that we were looking at December.
Oh, I thought we were looking at January.
Probably might have been. No, that's right. So I was looking at January fourteenth, sixteenth and twenty-first, if we could get two of those dates.
I'm available all those dates. We could do the fourteenth and sixteenth and then only use the twenty-first if we actually need it.
What would you? Uh, January fourteenth, uh, but the polarization department using the board.
Okay, so of course the fourteen. What date did you say that was?
Fourteenth, January. How could I change that to the sixteenth, twenty-first and twenty-third?
Yeah.
Okay. The other.
Do you want to do that?
Starting at what?
Eleven. Um, the twenty-third is, um, recycling.
So could we do that one?
Yes.
If we do it on the twenty-third, make it a one o'clock.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So what time we start, one o'clock or eleven?
Eleven for the sixteenth and twenty-first, twenty-third, if we need it, would be at one o'clock. Hopefully we won't need it. I don't think we have to, but it's just a discussion and I'll put it in the minutes.
Long you anticipate these budget meetings lasting?
Two, three hours.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Hopefully we can get it done.
Then. Any other bond amounts? All right, so, um, we have the amounts, the free amounts that we can get for our public officials bond renewal. Um, our ten thousand for the clerk, that's the only one that is kind of a.
It's not at.
Right. But it's not at the free level and currently we pay, um, two hundred and fifty thousand.
No, it, it's at two hundred.
I'm sorry, the bond is for two hundred thousand.
And it cost us five hundred. Five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Okay, I did something. Anyway, so we wanted to lower that to ten thousand dollars. Uh, because the only reason it was increased to two hundred thousand is the clerk at the time was when, um, I was first elected in two thousand sixteen. That clerk, um, was not making the, um, payroll tax payments. And we ended up in a some issues. I'm sure everybody remembers that. So because we're not in that position anymore, um, I think we can lower that back down to ten thousand dollars instead of two hundred thousand dollars. And then keep the deputy clerk at ten thousand, the treasurer at twenty-five thousand, deputy clerk at fifteen thousand, supervisor at five thousand.
How much do you really save?
Five hundred and thirty-two. Five hundred and thirty-two dollars. A year.
No, is it worth, and I guess it's worth it.
Yeah, five hundred bucks, I can go to something else. Need to.
We have a fair amount of safety nets. About that. Michelle, yeah, you know, make house payments and stuff.
No.
Right, everything is dual signature. I mean.
Yeah, I don't touch cash.
She doesn't touch.
And audited.
And we're audited every year.
And besides, we'd be really, really mad at you.
Yeah.
Um, Russ is asking a question.
Uh, Russ.
Russ.
He can't ask the question right now.
Right. So anyway, I will make a motion that we lower the clerk's, um, bond amount from to cover ten thousand dollars instead of the two hundred thousand.
You can support that. Who supported it? Did, okay.
Who did?
Steve.
Steve.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
On a roll call. Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski.
Yeah. Um, sorry, having patience with you.
No problem. Um, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that the township board entered a closed session to consult with township attorney regarding trial strategy in the water and sewer rate litigation pending before Alpena County Circuit Court pursuant to MCL one five dot two six eight one E.
Or.
Well, yeah. Roll call.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski. Um, so then just say the time and say we've now entered into closed session.
We're entering into closed session at eighteen, six forty-two. Are there?
Oh, I have to make a motion too.
Okay. Are there any motions?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to appoint trustee crawl, trustee lap and supervisor Kozibowski and township council to attend mediation on December fourth, twenty twenty-four regarding the water litigation.
Or.
Any motion in support?
Do you want me to take a roll call? Should we do a roll call?
Yeah, let's do it since, uh.
Take a roll call?
So important.
Trustee Polly.
Yeah.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski.
Yes.
So now, yeah, good public comment.
This is the second opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody online? Okay. Seeing no public comment online, is there anybody in person with a public comment? Seeing none? Is there any other discussion? I have two quick little things. One, I just want to, and it's really quick. I just wanted to let everybody know the, um, recycling center, the Northeast Michigan Materials Management Authority Board has hired an executive director. So, um, Bailey Bar. So that's a great thing. So, um, we're moving in that right direction. And then also, um, since we are no longer a member of MTA, um, the local chapter would still encourage us to attend those meetings, even though we can't vote.